Do I hear a motion to come out of closed session?
Motion that we come out of closed session?
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Are they all in favor?
Aye.
The staff, can you please read the certification paper, please?
Whereas the New Kent County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative or reported vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the New Kent County School Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved as the New Kent County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirement by Virginia law were discussed in closed meeting to which the certification resolution applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the New Kent County School Board.
Do I hear a motion to approve the certification of the closed session?
I move we approve the certification of the closed session.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Are they all in favor?
Aye.
No one opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. And is that time for us to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and every liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for being here tonight. The first item, pretty typical for what we do, is comments.
Good evening. Thank you for being here. It is an unusual start to a year, but one thing I've learned in my first year in New Kent is that we get through everything together and we're stronger because of it. So I just want to thank you for being here. I'm excited for some of the recognitions we have tonight and improve this work.
Thank you. We'll start down at the end of the table.
Yeah, the only comment I would like to make, Dr. Harding, is that I'm just, you know, I'm overwhelmed to live in a county that has so much engagement with their, with their residents, with their faculty, and with the administration to help us navigate through this because we all know that there's challenging times that have occurred and there are challenging times ahead of us, but I am proud to live in a county where we have a group of residents and parents that have joined together to try to help us navigate through that. And so I am excited about the future, but I am most thankful to live in a county with a great deal of engagement.
I too would like to echo that. It's been a long summer, a very non-traditional summer with all the work on everyone's plates. I want to thank all the teams that have worked hard this summer. We're optimistic about the fall. It's definitely an unusual start to the school year that will be undergoing in the next month, but you know, I'm proud to work with this board here and I'm very proud of Dr. Nichols and all the work that his team has done. Thank you.
I would, I would echo similar sentiments. I appreciate the, the number of people that have sent emails that expressing their sincere concerns about how we move forward as well as often some very, very thoughtful and creative solutions to hopefully help inform our, our decision. This is, this is truly a great community and it is wonderful to be, be able to be close enough to the community to make a difference and make, make a positive difference. So this again has been a challenging summer and we have a challenging year ahead of us because COVID is going to be with us for a while. So we want to get through this together.
And I echo those same sentiments. I was a little bit overwhelmed at the amount of positive feedback we actually got from the, the county people saying no matter what happens, we're with you. We know you're doing the best you can. I've, I've really appreciated that. It's been very difficult, emotional actually, because so many people have different stories that I can relate to certainly. So it's, it's definitely been hard, hard summer. On a positive, more uplifting note, I would also like to take a moment to thank Dr. Nichols, not only for his leadership, but for doing some really difficult things and challenging things. And I want to congratulate you for becoming Dr. Nichols, even in the midst of all of this. And so we're just very, very thankful for your leadership and everything that you've done for our schools and congratulate you on completing your PhD. So, thank you.
So we know that we started with a cyber attack.
We did.
And we now have a pandemic and, and a tropical storm. So we're really hoping that the conclusion of these last couple of summer days will go well. To think that, that Dr. Nicholson completed his doctorate during the course of his first year as a superintendent in the midst of all of the things that we've had, and then to hear all of the great things about the community who's come to know you so quickly, the county, parents, teachers, it is amazing that you have done what you have done. Do you want to?
We have a card for you.
Yes. So we have a, we have a small token of our appreciation for all of the hard work that you've done. Congratulations, Dr. Nichols.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I know I've already spoke, but I guess I get the liberty to speak one more time maybe. I really couldn't have done this. I tried to, I've been working on this doctor for quite some time and I could only do it here with the community support, with the board support. Everyone's just been tremendous and it's been a goal of everyone. So we all got in this goal together. People check on my progress. Did you write this weekend? No, I didn't write this weekend. So I mean, just thank you for being here and just thank you for wrapping around me so fast. My family loves it here. My son's a junior here and my wife and I talked about the other day, this is the place we want to bring grandchildren home to. I'm not ready for that yet. It's just twenty, the oldest, but you know, you're just, it's, this is home. So thank you.
We're going to move forward with recognitions and the first recognition is in honor of Ms. Watkins Crump. Do you want to?
Yeah. I'm going to move to the podium. So I'm going to read a little something and I know Dr. Harding may want to say something as well. This evening, we have the privilege of honoring Ms. Orpheen Watkins Crump for her many contributions in New Kent County Public Schools, specifically by serving as the first African-American woman on the New Kent School Board from 1986 to 1994. Ms. Crump recently passed away on June 10th, 2020, and this evening, we're very proud to present members of her family with a plaque to honor her. As I said before at the table, my family and I moved here a little over a year ago. One of the things that my son and I, we love to do is read the historical markers and our offices in the courthouse. So we're going to do a little something different with this plaque. We do have a plaque for the family, but I've learned so much by reading plaques around the county. We have a second plaque that's going to hang in our school board office in the, in the courtroom so that everybody else can read about Ms. Watkins Crump's contribution because it's a great story that needs to be told and people need to see it. So tonight, two of Ms. Crump's three children are in attendance, at least according to my script. So, so we have Ms. Iris Jordan and Mr. Kasim Crump. So if you'd like to come up and... And the plaque reads honoring the memory of Ms. Orpheen Watkins Crump, who served as the first African-American woman on the New Kent School Board, 1986 to 1994. It doesn't begin to define the contributions of that dash in between eighty-six and ninety-four, but it is a recognition of the work that she did. Dr. Harding?
I just want to say, if I can say it without tearing up, in 1986, I began my first job here in New Kent County. So Mrs. Crump was one of the first people that I knew that expanded her work beyond the school board to all of the essay contests that we had here, to all of the different things that she did. Every single year, Mrs. Crump was part of our year. So her passing is, is, is very sad. She made a tremendous amount of difference to us here and particularly for those of us who've been here for so, so long. So we want to thank you for taking the time to come tonight and to let you know that she made a huge difference in a lot of children's lives. Thank you.
We have a lot of members of Ms. Crump's family, extended family. If you'll stand just to show the, the impact, the influence and the overwhelming support as well. Just thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Nichols and Dr. Harding, for taking the time to extend to our mother the appreciation for the long service that she gave to the children of New Kent County to make sure that they were able to receive the resources and opportunities that they need to improve their lives, not here in New Kent, but wherever they may have pursued their careers in order to make things better in their lives. And we thank you and we appreciate everything that you've done. Thank you so much.
Do you have one additional recognition?
So we do have one more recognition. It's nomination to the 2020 BSBA Media Honor Role. So the VSBA, Virginia School Board Association Media Honor Role was created to recognize fair and balanced reporting about our schools and Virginia's public education system. Noting the importance role reporters and media outlets play in education, school division leaders rely on responsible reporting by local media representatives so that our community members receive timely information about division initiatives and programs. Each year, the VSBA seeks nominations to their media honor roll list, and each year we nominate Mr. Andre Jones of the New Kent Charles City Chronicle, who's here with us tonight. Mr. Jones was one of the first people I met when I came here to sign the initial contract and the picture he took is still the one we use in any media release or anything. But in addition to reporting, what I've learned in the past year, in addition to reporting fairly and accurately about our schools, he also writes thought-provoking editorials and keeps us really thinking about how to move things forward. So even beyond the educational arena, I really appreciate Mr. Jones and the work that he does. So, thank you, sir.
We will now move into the consent agenda. Board members, by now you've had the opportunity to review the items on the consent agenda, including the previous minutes, bills and payroll, monthly financials, and the superintendent's recommendations regarding personnel and student matters. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented?
I move we approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And no opposed? Motion carries. We will now open up the discussion for citizen comment period. Do we have someone up here gathering the?
We do.
What's that? Okay. Oh, that would be great. That would be terrific. I think I hear it right. Did you hear me say?
Hi, welcome.
Good evening.
My name is Rebecca Benz. This is my partner, Ashley Brown. We wanted to come this evening and appear in formal interviews ourselves. I'm a current resident of New Kent for the last thirty-six years. I graduated from New Kent High School alongside my husband, who was my high school sweetheart. Him and I have chosen to raise our children here.
Hello. I'm also a resident of New Kent County for the past forty years. I graduated from New Kent High School in ninety-eight. My daughter just graduated in twenty-twenty. And together Rebecca and I, we founded our group called One New Kent. We are an organization committed to promoting the inclusion and equality of all people and honoring, respecting, and celebrating our diversity. Our purpose is to promote awareness that there is one New Kent and that in New Kent, everyone matters. Our vision is to bring unity and inclusion to our community through healthy conversations and community interactions. And with One New Kent, we are creating a safe, welcoming, and unbiased environment for our important community topics, and we pray we energize our community to join us to do the same.
With that being said, we are extremely excited to see an anti-racism resolution on the agenda this evening. We also hope that in the near future that you guys will adopt an anti-bullying resolution to improve the current behavior violation of number twenty-six in the student family handbook. We would also like to personally thank you guys for working with Captain Joey McGlocklin and allowing us to hold our Prayer for Purpose Community March that's going to be held on August twenty-third at six PM. That's a Sunday. The march is set to be, to begin at New Kent Middle School and end at the lawn of the school board and courthouse. We just want to pray over our community before school starts and make sure that we truly promote inclusion. We hope that you guys will join us. If you find that you have any questions, you can either email us at onenukent@gmail.com or you can find us on Facebook with the group One New Kent.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Um, Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Todd Davis. I've been a resident here in New Kent County for about twelve years, and I just have a comment as far as, I got a six-year-old that's going to first grade next year, or this year, and we're kind of in an internet dead zone. It's kind of spotty and then it costs me ten thousand dollars with Cox to try to get them to hook up and HughesNet and all those other ones. They get really pricey to try to get unlimited. And I was just wondering what we can do with that, if we're going to be going back and forth between the school and trying to use the internet, you know, social media to, to teach our kids. That's, I wasn't sure if this was the proper time to present that or, but other than that, we love it in this county, so.
Well, we appreciate your, you're talking with us. We do have your phone number. Customarily, what we do is at board meetings, when someone speaks, we get back with you.
Okay.
So you'll be hearing from us.
All right, thank you.
And Mr. Davis, I'll give you a call.
Okay.
And kind of talk to you specifically to your first grade.
Okay, thank you.
But thank you so much. And then we have Dewana Gretsch. Did I pronounce that correctly? Gretsch? Help me out. Did I get it?
I was trying to think of my social. Sorry, just came from Parks and Rec camp. Just came from her. I am a substitute teacher in the county for the past five years since I moved, I moved here six years ago. Stayed home on the first year, six years of substitute teaching, every school in New Kent, now Charles City and West Point too, but New Kent misses me, I don't know. But I just, from my experience with the first time we locked down and trying to get my daughter Dahlia to sit and do all the work, what really struck me was when we got the email saying, "This work is optional", you know, and it just bothered me because you could hear, these kids, they all communicate on these devices. If they have a device, they're all talking. And you could hear them texting, talking, TikTok, you name it. This is optional. We don't have to do it or we don't want to do it. And then I sat with Dahlia's teacher, who we love, Ms. Shields, and she said, "Dahlia, we know it says optional, but if your mom said you have to do the work, you need to do the work." But I think that word optional kind of made the kids feel like they don't have to do work. So my question is this, as a substitute teacher in the county, as a New Kent mom, I'm concerned about the kids growing academically. I just want to find out what ideas have been put on the table as far as, is it going to resemble some kind of structure if it's remote? Is the teacher going to come on and try to teach for forty-five minutes or an hour? You know, it's, it's difficult because your teacher's at home trying to take care of their kids and trying to do the virtual remote too. I did that because I was a long-term server at Charles City. So I was trying to do my long-term students and help my daughter. So I just want to know what it kind of looks like structure-wise, if that's something new. And if they cannot, please try not to say the word optional. Try to say it's in your best interest for your knowledge. And whether you get an A, B, C, or D, mommy's going to still love you, daddy's going to still love you, but we want you to understand the old American way of hard work. And even if you made an A, C, B, or D, you still went back and you still tried it again. That's been my main concern is the education and how we're going to work this out as parents. And I appreciate for you, listen to me, I usually talk a lot, but I'm going to close it down. But that's my main concern is, what is it going to look like if it's just all remote? Or even A or B, I heard Monday or Wednesday, are teachers going to be there teaching? Or is it going to be packets again? Or, and just try to emphasize, please, you need to do this work for your own good. Not, this is optional, you don't have to do it. Because it puts in our American youth minds that they don't have to work. And it starts from pre-K, that they have to work. Okay? That's all I'll say. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Nichols. Oh, I'm staying. I wanted to meet Mr. Nichols. I'm staying. I'm staying. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so there are no, are no other comments this evening. We will move forward in old business to the Return to Learn Plan.
Good evening. Tonight I'll bring an update on the Return to Learn Plan. Many of the slides are similar to the work session, if you tuned into that or saw that posted. A lot of those are similar. We'll dive into a little more detail in some of those areas. So I think I may answer some of the questions that were just posed. I will tell you, in twenty-five years of education, this is by far, not even close, the most difficult thing that educators have had to encounter. So what you saw in March was emergency teaching. What we put in place for the fall will not look like that. It will not be optional. And just know, as we work through this Return to Learn Plan, I said before, I'm also the father of a junior at this school. So I have a decision to make. We have to weigh this as a family and look at what is in his best interest. So with that, we'll jump into Return to Learn and really just want to start with how we start this every time, and that's just what our goals are. So the first goal is to bring our students and staff back to school safely. And those safety measures and requirements and guidelines seem to shift weekly, sometimes daily, monthly. So also outline some safety measures and mitigation strategies to make in-person learning safer and to provide families with two options to meet the educational needs of their children. So those are the goals that we've been working on throughout this plan. So I'll talk a little bit about health and safety. We have a Phase Three Health and Safety Plan that has gone through our risk management. that has gone through our risk management, our legal counsel, and is at the Chickahominy Health Department right now under review. But these are the big categories that we have in this plan. Promoting behaviors that reduce spread. One of the best things we can do is not send our kids to school sick and not come to work sick. As a former second-grade teacher, I came to work not feeling well a lot because I wanted to be there for my kids. That is the absolute worst thing we can do, that we need to promote behaviors that reduce the spread. Signs and messaging, physical distancing. You all came through the scanner today to take a temperature. So school in the fall moving forward will look different. Maintaining healthy environments, so the daily health screening, facilities, cleaning, transportation, down to wiping down buses in between each run and doing all of those components. Maintaining healthy operations, preparing when someone gets sick, protection from vulnerable populations, athletics and physical education. And then we have to do contingency planning in case of closure. Those are all factors that have to go into this plan. So I want to bring up, is there any way we can drop those comments off? Thank you. So two plans. We have a hybrid plan and a virtual plan. So the hybrid plan has students on alternating days between at-school and at-home. Students will attend school in either an A or a B day. We have those zoned Monday through Thursday. All students will take part in at-home learning on Friday. Lesson extensions, independent activities, and we provided for at-home learning. One of the key things, knowing the county that we live in and the county that I serve, is that internet is an issue. So those at-home activities, if you are coming in hybrid, will not be internet-based. So you'll be able to download them if you have a Chromebook, or it'll be paper packet if you do not. So trying to take that piece out as much as we can in the hybrid solution. Graded assessments may be either in person or at home. None of this is optional. Okay? Going back to the March piece. On the virtual side, students attend school five days a week virtually. There will be a set schedule. So once again, different from the spring. Attendance will be taken, new instruction and grading will occur. So what happened in the spring, the Virginia Department of Education came out and said, "Do not do new learning and do not do grades." Because you don't know who has support, who doesn't have support, and so forth. So those are some of the nuances that you saw that would not be in place in a fall plan. Important to note, just in talking to a lot of families and a lot of teachers, virtual is not homeschool. So homeschool is a totally different piece. While you will be at home for school, it is still taught by one of our teachers. So there's a big difference between the two of those. The virtual school will be staffed by our teachers and will have access to all resources, programs of a New Kent student. So for example, if you are a virtual student attending New Kent High School, you're still a New Kent High School student. You can still play, if athletics are given to go ahead. You can still play athletics. You're still part of the PTSO. You still can be involved in clubs and activity. You can still do those things. If you're a homeschool student, you don't have that school connection. So just wanted to take just a moment and emphasize that point because that's one of the questions that we've received. But we'll have staff onsite in both models. So it will be scheduled. You will have direct interaction with the teacher in both models. Once again, just a glance at the hybrid schedule. It alternates between in-school and at-home learning. With Fridays at-home learning for all students and onsite for faculty. One of the things I wanted to share tonight is kind of what that Friday would look like. So elementary school would start with a morning meeting. That's typically how elementary school starts. Students would have some independent work, and then staff would have office hours and parent communication for the morning block. So the morning is spent with student engagement, helping with independent work, staff office hours, and so forth. In secondary, it goes by period because a kid is taking more than one course. So you can kind of see the schedule there. But it's online check-in, office hours, independent work. This is just that Friday component. And then there's professional development and collaborative planning for the remainder of the day. This is a huge shift for educators, and educators in the room can attest to it. Educators did not go to school to be virtual teachers or even to be hybrid teachers. I went to school to have twenty to twenty-two, twenty-five second graders with me every day. So this is a big shift. And for the first nine weeks, we'd like to, we're going to do it this summer as well, but we'd like to continue that professional development to get really good at this. Because we don't know if we'll be in this for nine weeks or the entire school year. But we know we'll learn lessons and we'll be better because of it through this professional development piece. Students with disabilities and English learners may be provided the opportunity to attend school on those Fridays. That will be an individual student decision based on the IEP team, the 504 team, or the EL team. So specific students, specific categories. We'll have additional opportunities. That attendance would mirror the morning schedule, eight to twelve. Okay? So that's an outline of what Friday would look like. I can't take questions.
The one to three hours within the work. Would that be online with a teacher, you can ask a teacher a question? Or is that one to three hours at home?
So both and. So yes, there would be that opportunity within that window as well.
So that one to three hours, teacher is giving instruction, and the students can write a sheet, and the students can ask questions.
It's more the, it's the independent side of it. The direct teaching will be done during the Monday, Wednesday, or Tuesday, Thursday. This is more of an at-home extension. So the student would be able to do it independently, but would have check-ins with the teacher on this day as well. Okay? Just instructional staff expectations in the hybrid option. You would provide instruction, alternating A-B for cohorts of students. The cohorts are A-B Monday through Thursday. Staff would be onsite. So that was another difference between the spring and the fall return. In the spring, we were all under orders to be at home. So juggling a number of different things. This is different because you will actually be onsite. We have access to technology, we have access to resources, access to all those different components. Connection between at-school and at-home learning, consistency with that. So you'll see similar types of things coming home. Weekly communication with each student's family to include office hour schedule. So you'll know the check-ins and you'll know those components. Clear at-home learning expectations for students and families. As I said before, I have an eleventh grader. He took chemistry last year. I'm not going to be able to help him. Okay? But I can support him. So the at-home learning will be things that they'll be able to do with some support and the check-in from the teacher at home. Teacher to the home. The virtual option is five days a week, fully online. It is live, real-time instruction by our teachers as well as digital coursework. So there'll be interaction with teacher, and they'll have work to do. Have that sort of setup. Digital coursework will be delivered through CSO. That's more in the elementary. And then Schoology, which if you're in grade six through twelve, you are familiar and using Schoology and utilize a variety of digital resources. But once again, it's our teachers teaching the content, which is very important. Daily attendance and graded assignments. It'll pretty much mirror a typical schedule and a typical school day. At some point, we would like these two groups to come back together. So we want them to have similar experiences, whether you're doing it here or you're virtual. We want you to have those similar experiences. Students receive a school-issued computer. So we have that in place. And in some cases, virtual Virginia, this is on the secondary side of things. High school will be utilized if there are not enough students to make a class. So typically, when you're scheduling classes, you need a certain number of kids to make a schedule. In cases where we don't have enough kids to make a schedule virtually, we have another solution there. So it won't limit as many opportunities for kids. So just an important nuance there as well. Once again, this is different than a homeschool track. A homeschool track, you put forth a notification to me and show the curriculum that you would utilize at home. Completely different than the school experience. Okay? So those are the two options that we have for families to choose from or the proposed options that we're talking about today. I do want to spend a little bit of time in this presentation just talking about how things could shift. This process continues to shift based on a number of factors. Each Tuesday, I meet with all the other superintendents in the Commonwealth with the state superintendent, and we get updates. We get updates from the Virginia Department of Health. We get updates from the Virginia Department of Education. We get federal updates. And I will tell you, it shifts dramatically. So I want to let you know that this could shift at some point. This is what we know today, but we are watching two other data points. One is staffing, and I'll talk more about that. And the other is health data. So as health data shifts, we may have to shift. As our staffing data shifts, we may have to shift. So we have additional possibilities that we may have to go to or propose depending on the shifts that occur with staffing and health. So we could modify the current plan and prioritize elementary students coming in a hybrid. That is not what we're voting on tonight necessarily, but that is a possibility. And then be six, twelve virtual, all kids in six through twelve are virtual. Or, as some school divisions are doing, we could be completely virtual if some of those factors shift. So I just wanted to make that point here that there are impacts to our plan. One of the most frustrating things for me as a superintendent and as a parent is that I can't tell you today definitively that in almost four and a half weeks that we're going to be in the same position as a Commonwealth or as a county when it comes to COVID-19. So let me show you a couple of data points just so you can look at it. This is up to date as of yesterday, total confirmed cases in the county. So now we're up to one hundred and twenty-one cases. If that impacts our school, and it very well could, our school community, we could have issues bringing kids to school in a hybrid format. Okay? So that's one data point that we're watching. We're partnering with the Chickahominy Health District, and we're working collaboratively with them on these data points. Okay? So that's a big one that we have to continue to watch. The second point I mentioned was staff and staff flexibility. So we also have to take care of and protect our staff. So any staff that is at risk, and you see the categories that are outlined there, we are required to work with them and provide flexibility. We could get to a point with the staff flexibility that we can't operate a hybrid option. Okay? With the number of staffs. There is a teacher shortage. We can't just replace a teacher with this flexibility piece. Whether it's FMLA or FFRCA, those are two different opportunities or two different conditions that we have to follow when it comes to staff flexibility. So we're watching our staffing numbers, and we're making sure we're taking care of our staff. I just wanted to bring those two things to everybody's attention, whether you're watching on Zoom, YouTube Live, or in-person, that while we are talking hybrid, pre-K twelve, or virtual, there are other scenarios that could drive us in a different direction, completely out of our control. But today, where we are, this is what we're looking at.
What percentage of teachers have asked to not work in school?
Because that's personnel data. I can't divulge that at this time.
Just percentage?
Percentage-wise, we'd have to, I'm looking to human resources right now. But there are various... It's a tough question to answer directly because each one of those has a story, and we're working with them individually.
At what percentage did it involve those productive students?
It will depend by level. So at the high school, for example, teachers are licensed very specifically. Whereas in the elementary school, teachers are licensed more generally. My license is pre-K five. So I could teach anywhere pre-K five. Teachers at our high school are either endorse English or math. It really depends on the teacher, unfortunately. So there's not a hard data point. We do have general numbers around when we would have to go that route. But it also could be less than that depending on who. And especially in a smaller school division where sometimes you only have one of, it makes it incredibly difficult.
For elementary school, can you give an estimate?
For elementary school, can you give an estimate?
At what percentage of teachers are allowed? At what percentage of teachers are allowed residential instruction in the hospital? So... And we presented the fourth thing on the...
That's for current, if correct.
But currently, that's just current that we are having made aware of to take. However, there are...
So next steps for us pending tonight's outcome. We have a student intent form where families would choose hybrid or virtual, once again pending a vote. Actually, you would choose virtual if you're going virtual. And if you're hybrid, we need to know your transportation choice. If you're virtual, you don't need transportation. But if you're hybrid, you may or may not need transportation. One of the things I talked about in previous work sessions and showed a picture of, and I'll just mention it here. One of the biggest obstacles in this planning is social distancing on a bus. Our buses only hold so many students. And when you have to go every other seat, or yeah, one student per seat with a mask, then you have great difficulty transporting kids. So professional development for our teachers, teacher planning, because how you're going to teach during the day is going to be different. If you're only going to have your kids every other day in a hybrid model, you're going to teach the day you have them. Very, it's going to be different than if you had them every day. So you're going to teach a lot different. So you have the professional development piece, teacher planning, back-to-school scheduling. One of my favorite things about opening a school year are back-to-school nights and orientations and... Well, we can't bring that many people together at one time. So we have to look at that differently, think about that differently, and schedule that differently. Still connect with families, connect with kids, but it can't look anything like it's looked before right now. And that's one of the biggest things people need to understand is with the rules, the guidelines and regulations, school will look different for the foreseeable future. Instructional plan, we have to submit an instructional plan to the Virginia Department of Education, and then we also have to submit a health plan as well. I do want to take a moment and show you the student virtual learning intent form. We have a Return to Learn webpage that will go up by the end of business tomorrow pending the outcome of a vote. There are pieces we need to put in place pending tonight. So you have school board decision on Wednesday, August sixth. We would have a message to families going out tomorrow with the intent forms. The intent forms will be, you'll be able to fill them out online. And there'll be copies available at each of our schools as well. Okay? So you'll have those pieces for... Okay, so you'll have those pieces for transportation, hybrid students. You'll also receive a confirmation email from us as well, okay? So very important to know. That's the virtual learning intent. The transportation intent form for hybrid students only really is what it sounds like. Bus capacity is limited. We are strongly encouraged families to transport students if they can. And families, encourage families to transport students to and from school due to those limitations. If you do not communicate your need for transportation, there will not be a bus stop. So this is very important. If you move in the hybrid model, you need to let us know you need transportation. Because if we don't hear that, we're assuming you don't need the transportation, okay? You will hear this in emails, you will see it in a Facebook post, you will get a phone call with my lovely voice on it. You're going to hear from us every day on these pieces, and we'll continue to reiterate them, and we'll ask, answer any questions that you have as well throughout this process. All right, announce the Return to Learn webpage. We'll have frequently asked questions. It will have all of this information that you have in front of you. It will have the intent forms on it. And it'll also have a draft version of the health plan as well. And board members, that is the updated presentation this evening. Be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Dr. Nichols, if this, depending on how we go with either virtual or hybrid learning, the clarification is this is going to be evaluated after the first nine weeks, correct?
Yes, actually, yes, sir. We are looking nine weeks at a time. The virtual commitment is for a semester, but we're looking at this nine weeks at a time, and we're going to be evaluating it every week. It will be a standard item at our board work sessions monthly. So we'll continue to update you on those factors and the plan connected to it. So yes, sir.
Dr. Nichols, one of the updates from the Department of Education is that they're developing metrics for the safety, when it's safe to return or send more students back to the classroom. Can you explain for us what you anticipate that looking like and when that's going to be rolled out?
From what we've heard from the Virginia Department of Education, we will see that in the next few weeks. I know it has several components on it. It's color-coded by region. So we're in the central region. One of the things that we've asked for, we don't always line up with other school divisions in the central region. So what we've asked for specifically, and the reason it'll be a couple more weeks, is we want New Kent specific, so we can make those decisions and look at other areas as well. Since 50% of our staff travel from outside New Kent, we want to look at specific areas and not tied into, the central region is really large. But it'll be about number of new cases, community spread, and they have a color coding system with it as well. So yes, and then really Chickahominy Health Department has that data, and then we have to work with them. We don't actually get that data directly. That is a point of contention with superintendents. We feel like since we're making recommendations to the board, we should have that data, but that is at a stalemate right now at the state level. So right now, we work with Dr. Frank and the Chickahominy Health Department.
Dr. Nichols, can you talk a little bit about what a child's day is going to be like in the building? When they, when they enter the building, what will they go through? When they're in the classroom, what will, for instance, what will a first grader's classroom look like? It's not going to look like it did last year. So if you could talk a little bit about how they'll move through the building and what they're going to see as first graders or kindergartners in the classroom?
Yes, yes, I could do a little bit, a little bit of that as well. So one of the things that you'll notice is the setup of the room and the setup of the building. Our maintenance team has done a tremendous job of moving furniture out to minimize surfaces. So you will see fewer surfaces at the elementary level specifically. A student will have their own assigned desks. That desk will be wiped down every morning and every afternoon, evening. So you have the cleaning protocols. You'll see an additional day porter custodian at each school. One is specifically assigned to restrooms, so you'll see the additional protocols there. Students will still receive the services they received before, music, art, PE, library, but it'll look different. In some cases, that will come to them. In some cases, they would still go to the place, depending on the building and the setup. But once again, you'll be socially distant. You won't have those collaborative groups that we're so used to seeing and that we worked very hard to do. You'll see a lot more rows and desks and things like that within it.
How about mask wearing? How will, how will elementary school students be expected to use masks?
So the mask part is a big part of our, our work. So for transportation, mask wearing is required on the bus because we cannot maintain the six-foot social distancing. Masks will be required when we can't maintain at least six feet of social distancing. So masks will be a big part of a hybrid option. And it's really something we have to do in accordance with VDH. It's something we have to do in accordance with what we know around those protocols. There will be opportunities, and there are exceptions. Let me just say that. There are medical exceptions. There are IEP exceptions to the mask pieces. And there, there would be opportunities where the mask could be down with the maintaining of social distancing. Playgrounds, for instance, if you're social distancing on playgrounds, you have to pull it down when you're eating, you know, those different components there, so. We'll be doing a lot of work with our staff, training with our staff, training with students. We piloted at each of one of our schools, summer programming, to work on some of those things. So we have some teachers that have done that work already and can tell us what worked well, what didn't work, and what we need to do better. And I have a whole team of experts that can chime in anytime and help me.
I have a question about our expenses. Are, how is this going to impact our budget? How many, how much more increase in expenses do you think?
That's a great question, and it's not something that we've covered in presentations, but it is something for the community and the schools to understand. So a big part of our expenses are related to PPE, sanitizer, those different components. We've had a great partnership with Chief O-Pad and Emergency Management to make sure we're able to secure those things. But expenses there, one of the things I mentioned with staffing is we're going to have a higher need for substitutes. So our substitutes, our substitute costs right out of the gate are disproportionately greater than they would be in a normal year. So we would be basing two long-term substitutes at each one of our schools, which is not something we traditionally do, but we think we would need to be able to cover outages and shortages and so forth. That alone is about 125,000 just on the substitute, and that would be a new cost, an additional cost. Screening tools, everybody came in, utilized that screening tool. That is one of the things that we're looking at now and working with. That comes at a cost as well. I mentioned the additional day porter custodian. That's an additional cost as well. So the costs continue to add up. We will be doing double runs when it comes to transportation. We can only fit half the kids on a bus, not even half. So there are additional costs in fuel, potential in driver cost, and so forth. So those are a few of the examples, but there are more, and I could get the board a longer list of costs. One of the questions from the public was about internet. We pushed out two Wi-Fi enabled hotspots, and we'll also be pushing out 10 more of those into the community. We're purchasing a number of MiFi individual WiFi's for families too, and we're pushing those out as well, working with each school on those. So those are some additional costs related to that as well.
Will we be able to make a plan to fill the gaps for students? Because I think it would be naive for us to think that they're going to have the same amount coming out of this school year that they would if this were a regular classroom. So are there things that we can put in place, you know, later to help fill those gaps?
One of the most exciting things that we're starting to work on is what next summer would look like. So that would be a jumpstart that we feel, that we're excited about, to provide opportunities across pre-K-12 for students to fill gaps, move forward, reconnect, jumpstart the next school year. So that would be the start of it, but I would see that continuing for the next certain, a number of summers, potentially some Saturday work that we would do with kids. Lots of opportunities for after-school programming and things like that. We're pursuing a number of grants because once again, that would be an additional cost to the school division, but it would be a huge investment, something we need to do for students at all levels.
If we could hear a little information about prevention, looking at social, emotional support, regardless of hybrid or virtual, how are we going to be able to support children through these really confusing times?
Great question. We're going to, we will be working similar to, similar but different to the work we started this year around with Sanford Harmony, specifically at the elementary school, continuing that work, whether you're hybrid or virtual. Sanford Harmony is a program specifically targeted, social, emotional, and working with families and students in that arena. Really working collaboratively with our counselors to do that work and some of our specialists as well. I don't have in front of me, but I have the specific pieces. And Dr. Pollard, I don't know, I'd put you on the spot, but if, if.
Okay, thank you. Are there plans with regard to mask wearing if students are non-compliant with mask wearing?
That's a conversation that really just started with Mr. Valdrigi and I at the high school as we're kind of talking through that piece, and we're going to loop. We're really looking at it middle and high school primarily, although it will be an issue at elementary. We think that'll be less so than middle and high. So really, for us, it's getting middle and high school on the same page for what, what does that look like? What are the consequences associated with it? What happens? Almost similar to any other infraction, you know, what does level one mean? What does level two mean? What is level three? And to be very consistent with them. So we are developing those. Those would come back before the board, almost as an addition to code of conduct, but not officially in that document. But sort of that same approach.
Right.
Because it's, we view it similar to any other rule that we would have in place. It is in place to keep kids safe. It's in place to mitigate risk. It's seen as a best practice and advised by our outside agencies.
All right. Questions regarding PPE for teachers? Will teachers have both masks and shields? And will bus drivers have masks and shields?
Right now, the plan has masks in place, but working with each site to determine, including transportation, what the needs are. There are some positions that would need more of a face shield. One of the, our child nutrition workers have a face shield. Worked through that process with them. So it really depends on the need. Give you just a different example, but related to it and how we're attacking it. So like Plexiglas dividers, there are some office spaces, counseling spaces, things like that, where we don't have as much separation as we like, so we have that kind of divider there as well. So really attacking that by individual or group position need. There are certain, if you're working with a speech teacher, it's very important to be able to see them out. So we need to provide a different solution for that case as well.
I would, I would point out that it might be something that would be considered at the elementary level just because of the impulsivity and the, the kids, I mean, we already know what mask activity is going to be like.
Right.
We can, we can joke about it, but it's serious and we know what it's going to be like. So the question is, how are we going to make sure that we address things like trading masks? Your mask on the floor. Yeah, I mean, how are we going to address that? And that's one of the reasons I was asking about shields for teachers, because that would be one more layer of protection if a child is spitting or coughing or.
Right.
You know.
And on the student side, it's really about the training and the protocols. Similar to when you set up your classroom, this is how we, we walk in, here's how we do this. It's, we would approach that from the same way. Talked a lot to our teachers about the different protocols we now need to put in place, thinking about sanitizing your hands before you come in, sanitizing your hands when you leave, wiping down your desk space, all of those different components with the bathroom routine. All of those different components and the mask piece would be part of that as well.
So looking at it from a technology standpoint, what, let's just tell us, what will students have available in terms of Chromebooks? What age level, I mean, what grade level? Just let us know about the Chromebooks for a second.
So previous years, students 6 through 12 would have Chromebook. Every kid has a device. We actually have the devices in place for elementary students. We store them on a cart. So what we've been working on, we, our technology department's been working on, is dismantling those carts to make those available for all students. Now, I don't know that you want a kindergartner taking home a Chromebook every day. That's almost as big as them in their bookbag. But there could be other solutions where it stays at home, and then they come to school and they don't need that device because they're working directly with the teacher. But that's some, that's an arena where there's no additional cost, because we actually had it in place. We're just deploying it differently. So every kid would have availability to a device.
And there's a replacement, repair process already, already set up for that?
One of the things we did that, that the public may not know, but our kids in 6th through 12th grade, not our 12th grade because they left us, they kept their Chromebook all summer. So we've actually been trading out and have a process in place for that during the school year, but we added it to the summer as well. So yes. There'll be a process in place for parents to get them, orient with them, but also repair, replace.
Okay.
Because they do break.
So staying along with the technology piece, looking at the hotspots, is anybody working with the school division on that? Is the county working with us on that?
The county has a broadband committee, which Mr. Hill, for our technology director, is a part of. This is independent of this. This is, and probably one of the most frustrating things for me is really, that's not a solution. It's a, it's a Band-Aid at best because there are parts of our county that don't get a cell signal.
Right.
But the money that's coming through some of these infrastructure initiatives that you'll read about, either federal or state, and we're applying for some of those grants, don't really go to infrastructure. It's about more Wi-Fi hotspots. We can push out 10 more mobile Wi-Fi hotspots. We can push out 60 more MiFi Wi-Fi devices for families. But if you live in certain parts of this county, that still does you no good. So that's a long answer to say no. Really, this is independent of, but we, we do have a partnership on, on the longer-term piece.
So just, I mean, based on the information that you're sharing with us tonight, frankly, at some point, virtual is going to be part of our life. So my question is, in the conversations with the county and county meetings, what you've told me is that thus far, thus far, the buck's stopped with the school system on infrastructure or on hotspots. So what I'm saying is, for the future, and I mean as in tomorrow, conversation with the county about working together with regard to the Band-Aid even, to the hotspots. I'm just not quite sure why internet has fallen on the backs of the school division in this situation. It's very troubling.
Yeah.
Transportation.
Yes.
Variants? What's the, what's the, what do you think under hybrid that a, that if a parent is walking their child to the end of their driveway to get on a bus, what would that look like?
So a student would board the bus with a mask. That is a requirement for the transportation piece. A student would have an assigned seat, so they'd have the same seat every. A student would have a assigned seat, so they'd have the same seat every day, and they'd be the only person on that seat, unless they're a sibling. So bad news for siblings, you have to ride together. But, so it would be one student per seat spaced, assigned seats. Buses, so we run a number of runs, so we'd run middle and high school under that umbrella. Wipe down the bus, clean the bus, go pick up elementary kids. Sometimes we'll have to do a double run, depending on where it is, and then wipe down buses again before we go out again. So really, mask on, one student per seat, siblings can ride together or will ride together on assigned seats. Once again, different than we would typically do to a degree.
Board members, any other questions?
Dr. Nichols, have we asked for any variance, variances from this, from the state with respect to the, to the guidelines that were rolled out? Not the mandates, but the guidelines. Do we have any variances?
The, the biggest variance that we have at this time is the transportation variance. Following the guidelines to the letter, we would have six to seven kids on a bus. So the guidelines are one kid per every other seat. And Mr. Hens is here in case I, I get too off track on my transportation knowledge. But that's the biggest variance that we have in place. In order to be able to even come at 50% capacity, we have to get one kid per seat with a number of parents transporting kids.
Dr. Nichols?
Yes, sir.
For middle school and high school parents, I know one of their concerns is, is that what will athletics potentially look like at the middle school and high school level? And then what will extracurricular activities look like at the clubs and things of that nature? And what can they expect under a, even under a hybrid system or even under a virtual system?
For the fall term, so for the, at, at least the first nine weeks, they wouldn't be occurring in a traditional sense after school. The VHSL, Virginia High School League, just announced provisions for conditioning and practicing. So that could be in place, and we have created ways to still do some of the activities and so forth. But we will take our guidance on, on most of that from the VHSL. Right now, their plan is to start in late November, I believe, and do winter sports, then fall sports, which means we'll run across country and play in football in February. That'll be interesting. And then spring. So we would follow those guidelines, because ultimately, VHSL makes that determination. And that actually, to your question, really played into our transportation in an unexpected way. You, the number of kids that tend to stay after school for activities, athletics, all of those different things, now have to come home on the bus. So we had to factor that in when typically our afternoon routes are lighter at the middle and high school because of all the options and opportunities for kids.
Questions? One clarification before we move forward. The slide that you put up with regard to the two situations that could occur that could impact us if we went with the option for parents to have virtual or hybrid. Your comment was that we could go hybrid. And something, two things could happen. The first thing is, we could hear from the state, which we know, that says we go back to phase two and we end up having to go fully virtual. But the second reason that you gave is something that I think it's really important for parents to hear. And I say that because parents have asked a lot of questions about how they could plan. And it's probably the hardest thing to do is to plan right now, because everything feels like a moving target. It just, it's constantly moving. So here's the thing you said. If we do not have, if we have staffing issues, if we do not have enough teachers to come into the schools, we may not be able to teach hybrid K through 12.
That is correct. And that could be not only teachers, it could be any position, so transportation, bus drivers.
Right.
Along those same lines. So not relegated to one position group, but staffing overall.
Okay.
Could make hybrid difficult to impossible.
And I think it's really important for families to know. So for example, if we did not have enough bus drivers, we could not do bus routes, the first thing we would do is tell people, we do not have bus transportation, correct?
As, as awful as that sounds, it just gives you an idea of how this is not a traditional setup. That would be...
It could happen.
That would be a solution that we would put forward.
Okay.
About the transportation piece.
If you looked at positions in terms of what's happening, and I know I'm kind of looking over at Cynthia, my next question is related to if you, if you did not have enough teachers, is the first thing that you would do would be to look at where those teacher shortages are? And would we split up what we could open and not open from a hybrid standpoint? Is that what we're saying?
... who needs a sub to teach is ill, they put in for that. So of course, that company's time filled this position. Our principals are always working with their staff, with their instructional assistants, they're working with everybody that they can to deploy them to, to cover. We've talked about paying care professionals at a higher rate if they have to cover in their classrooms. We're trying to talk about all kinds of possibilities to determine how we can cover those classrooms to ensure that our children are getting the best instruction possible. We can't anticipate anyone who could become a substitute or who may have a higher risk factor, but just don't know all of them. So we may have to look at it at a secondary level. We could have a non-grade at secondary, at secondary level. And then we may have to make decisions regarding what does that look like? Would secondary, then would virtual? And could we still then keep elementary going? If they look at it that way? We would have to, it really will be situational on a day-to-day, takes-up-a-situation. And that's trying to explain to parents in the community that there are so many factors that we're looking at to ensure everyone faces our staff, your, your, your children, everyone. Complicates matters a lot. Often then looking at the ridership on the buses and where do they come in? What's that look like?
Thank you. I mean, I just think it's important for people to realize that one plan does not necessarily mean that's how it's gonna be for the next nine weeks. We hope that what we do will take us through nine weeks and gradually we can get back to normalcy. But the truth of the matter is, it's, it's going to be very difficult to plan, you know, in the weeks and in the month ahead. We're gonna take one day at a time, but parents need to be thinking about that. Okay.
And just to add to that, I mean, it's important to understand that a lot of these teachers will be substitute teachers, not our regular teachers, which has a huge factor for people to consider.
And you're also bringing a substitute teacher into a non-traditional teaching situation. So it's a, it's a very different approach. And I'm not even sure about substitutes for virtual teachers. So, you know, this is all uncharted territory, and we, we really are building it as we go.
Okay. If there are no other board questions, do I hear a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendations regarding the return-to-learn plan as presented?
I move we approve the return-to-learn as presented by the superintendent.
Hey, do I hear a second?
I second.
Before we move forward with the vote, and I know we've asked a lot of questions, all board members have an opportunity now to say something if they would like. So we'll take a minute for, to give you a chance to do that before we call the vote.
You wanna start with me?
Absolutely, sir.
You know, I do appreciate everyone participating in, in this process of return-to-learn. And when we first evaluated this, my hope was, and what my recommendation was, is that we could return-to-learn five days a week. And after evaluating that with the board and the superintendent, the challenge why that got taken off the table was just strictly because of, of the physical capacity of both of our elementary schools being both at over 110% capacity. So even in following the health department recommendation of three-foot distancing with an average class size of 26 to 27, it was not feasibly possible to, to go by those health department recommendations of, of social distancing and being, still being able to pull off five days a week. And that, and that's the reality, but that was my preference. And I understand, you know, the recommendations and the guidelines. But my hope and prayer is that we can move back to five days a week as quickly as possible. Being a pastor, I'm an eternal optimist, that I, I feel that based on everything that has occurred, I'm hoping that we can progress through this, these nine weeks and the weeks to come, so that we can get back to face-to-face learning. Because we all know that no matter how we, how we communicate it, there's nothing that replaces face-to-face learning. And that is my hope and prayer, that we can get there as soon as possible. And I know the concerns of parents with the emotional, social well-being of that is, is just as much as critical. And that's why I'm so grateful for Dr. Nichols and the staff of doing everything they can to give us these options, so we can progressively make those decisions with the best information that we have possible to return to learn in a safe manner for our students, for our staff, and for our faculty. Obviously, we care deeply about that, and we will take every precaution possible to make that happen. And I know also for these parents, being the overseer of a, of a daycare center that takes care of 100-plus kids every single week, we are working, the daycare centers are working diligently on those days off, under a hybrid plan, to provide as many services as we possibly can for those students, because our commitment is, is to education and to academics. And we want to provide those environments for those students every opportunity possible. And I know that many daycare centers in our community, which are pretty much at capacity, are doing everything they can to accommodate the students as well as parks and rec and going. So you just need to know, as the public, as students, as administrators, that we are committed to the academic excellence of your children more than anything. But we will do that with the best information that we have available, and the end game is to get everybody face-to-face as we move through this process as, as safely, as cautiously. But at the same time, is to optimistically still progress forward in providing those opportunities for you as a parent and as the students, so that they can get the best education possible with the resources we're making available to them. Thank you.
It's always difficult to follow a pastor, but I'll give it my best. Thank you again to Dr. Nichols, the administrative team, and the members of the return-to-learn task force for their dedicated work throughout the summer in, in developing the options that we heard again about tonight for the fall. These options are intended to ensure safety and protect everyone, including our students, teachers, administrators, staff, and families. Their charge was and still is next to impossible. And while the intent is to provide safe options, the risk will always be present. The task force started to create these plans in June, when the governor's guidelines were announced. By tradition, public schools remain a locally controlled enterprise, and the decision on how to reopen was left to the individual school districts to figure out, along with those guidelines, but not mandates, from the Virginia Department of Education and the CDC. There was optimism, optimism in early June, we were, we were optimistic, about how the public was responding to the pandemic. They said, stay at home, stay safe, slow the spread, and flatten the curve. The fall would be better, we all hoped, and July came quickly. The landscape and the Commonwealth began to change. The numbers of COVID-19 cases across the state increased, so there was confusion, apprehension, and fear. The return-to-learn plans were all over the place. They were in flux, they were disjointed, and they were inconsistent. The guidelines were changing every week, we heard. The reality of a county such as New Kent lacking an infrastructure to support high-speed internet came to the forefront again. And the fact that students need school for so much more than just in education became very apparent. Schools are needed to provide nutritional support, emotional and social support, counseling, and structure. This pandemic presents problems for where there are no good solutions, but rather just a series of suboptimal choices. No matter what choice we make tonight, we need to be agile, and we need to be prepared to pivot in either direction, depending upon how this virus continues to spread, and as we've seen tonight, how our workforce responds to us. Throughout the last few months, I've heard from many people, just like my fellow board members. I've received emails and phone calls from single mothers, single fathers, two-income working parents, grandparents that are concerned for their grandchildren, and teachers. I've heard from the founder of a local charity that assists women who are the victims of domestic violence. She chose to tell me that she wanted to speak up on their behalf, because oftentimes, these women are too scared to speak up. And as exhibited during last week's public comment portion of our school board work session, a majority of parents favor in-person instruction for the next school year. I don't believe that anyone should be faulted for wanting to return to school in person or for deciding that online instruction is safer. We must continue to bring objective analysis to the question of reopening. But unfortunately, the increase in the number of cases continues to tie the hands of educators. I'm not one to tell, I'm not inclined to tell people how to live their lives, but I would ask that all of us be diligent and work to reduce the spread of this virus, so that we can move forward with plans to open school in a safe and effective manner. And on a personal level, my father-in-law was recently in the hospital for two weeks with the coronavirus, so I know that this situation is serious. But in conclusion, it's not my job to speak for parents, it's my job to listen to them. It's my job to provide them the opportunity to speak for themselves and for their children. It's my job to give them the option to choose how their child returns to school in the fall. Thank you.
I'd like to just commend again the outstanding efforts that our administration and faculty and staff and Return to Learn Task Force have put into what it, what we will soon vote on. I personally, on a daily basis for my job, have been reading and researching COVID-19 and making environment safe, and I've been able to observe the careful efforts that our team has gone through in order to do this. This is, this has been, indeed been an enormous feat. We're rethinking how we deliver education to our children, something that has evolved over the last 100 years. We're, we're having to turn around and change in a few months' time. Personally, I am a parent of a rising senior at the high school. This'll be his last year in, in grade school, and I think about all of the children, and this, this year will not be normal for them, and it's... And it's very disheartening. New Kent's limited resources give us the framework that we will work with. We've got overcrowded elementary schools, and social distancing really pushes out what we can do. But we are applying everything we can in order to make a safe environment for both our children, our staff, and faculty and administration. Concerns had been expressed to me by many parents through emails and phone conversations, some very creative ideas, which I really appreciate, that our community wants to see us succeed. And again, I'm grateful to be in a community where that's the kind of support we receive. We, as a board and division, are responsible for approximately 4,000 people's health, safety, and welfare. And we're embarking on a decision to maintain that as well as deliver an education and provide the emotional and social support for our children. So will this plan be perfect? No. Will it get better? Yes, we hope so. And we will continue to do our best to provide a safe, nurturing, learning environment for our children. My advice to parents after tonight is to be very deliberate about the decision you make for your children, because them going into the school is going to look different than the school they left last fall. So just be mindful that it's going to be a long time before things look normal again.
I echo my colleague's sentiments. I don't want to be redundant and say a lot of the same things that they said. I feel the same way. In my day job, I am a licensed nursing home administrator and executive director of a retirement community. I will say that I've seen a little bit too much. I've been involved in a lot of phone calls across the state that are scary. One of the things that we've learned is how easily the transmission happens from people who do not look or seem to be sick. So for example, staff members in a nursing home who exhibit no symptoms at all accidentally pass the virus on to a resident, and then once everybody's tested, then they realize. So there are plenty of people out there that have it, that have no symptoms. And so we just all need to be diligent about that. One of the things, or a couple of things that have been weighing on me personally is there are some things that just are not in our hands. There are two major needs that the schools have that we have no control over. And the first is that we need another elementary school. It's been mentioned here before tonight. We need this elementary school built yesterday. We would not have these issues right now if that third ele, well, I don't know exactly. But we would have far less trouble if we had that third elementary school in existence right now. It has been delayed time and time again, and even now, we've missed the deadline to begin construction for a 2021 opening. If we don't fund the elementary school this fall, we could also miss a 2022 opening. The silver lining is that the rates for borrowing money right now couldn't be better. We need a school built as soon as possible, and we cannot keep kicking this can down the road. The second we've talked about tonight is that our older children right now, to be successful in the classroom and at life, they need reliable, high-speed internet. And that is not something that the school board has control over. I ask all of you watching to please just take a moment and think about a dollar amount that these are worth to you, having that third elementary school, having that high-speed internet, because there is a cost associated with those. Then you can help us by contacting our New Kent Board of Supervisors and asking that they fund the new elementary school project and bring our county reliable, high-speed internet for everyone, because our children deserve better than what we have to offer them right now. That's it.
Thank you very much. Board members, thank you very much. Over the last couple of weeks, and increasingly as we've gotten down to this vote tonight, there have been so many requests for, please just tell us so we could schedule. Parents want to know. Parents who are teachers, people who work and don't know what to do about their work schedule. Everyone's been saying, please just tell us so we know what to do, so we can make a schedule. Well, we're here voting tonight, and I hope you heard how tenuous this situation is. Whatever we do could change tomorrow. Please, families, make your plans that best fit your situation. Our staff are committed to educating your children. The work that they have done over the last two months has been tremendous. They're tired. It's exhausting when every day something is different, and we can't make everyone happy. We wish we could. But when you are frustrated, please remember how committed all of the staff are in New Kent County. Just take a moment and think about that before you really express your frustration. Teachers love what they do. Many are returning to the classroom, putting a great deal of trust in families to only send their kids to school if they're well. And they're putting a lot of trust in us to give them the tools they need. In many ways, we feel like we're caught between a rock and a hard place. I feel like I've used a lot of cliches tonight. And that's because we're caught up against things we can't control, money we don't have, space we don't have. And we still keep plugging, and we will, and I like what Ms. Winford said when she said, we need to be nimble. We will continue to do that on behalf of our community and our parents and our teachers. And we don't want you to forget that. Please. Thank you. With that, there is a motion that has been made and seconded on the floor. In this particular situation, what I'd like to do is I'd like to have everybody vote. We'll start down at the end of the table. There's a motion on the floor. If you are in agreement, please say aye.
I'm in agreement, aye, on the virtual and the hybrid learning system that the superintendent presented.
Yes, I am in favor of offering a choice between virtual or hybrid.
Yes, I'm in favor of offering a choice with hybrid and virtual.
Aye, I'm in favor of offering a choice between hybrid and virtual.
Likewise, I am voting yes. Motion carries, five to zero. A little overwhelming. Hang with us. Oh, thank you. We are now going to move into new business. And the first item on the agenda, Dr. Nichols, is the anti-racism resolution. Thank you.
Thank you again, school board members. Just pausing for a second, the enormity of the work that has gone into the Return to Learn and your comments and the vote. Just want to thank you for your leadership and commitment as we continue to move forward. Tonight, I have before you, and it was mentioned in one of the comments, New Kent County Public Schools Anti-Racism Resolution. As I look to the screen, it's not there, but I can read it. This is in partnership with the Virginia School Board Association. It says, whereas members of the New Kent School Board, as well as the New Kent Public School staff, are saddened outraged by recent events that demonstrate prejudice and injustice, whereas racism and hate have no place in our schools or society, and we must protect the constitutional rights of every person who lives, works, and learns in our community. Whereas we cannot be silent, we urgently must act to stop the racial injustice that harms and anguishes Black people, who are family, friends, neighbors, students, staff members, and fellow Americans. Whereas we must listen, those who have endured discrimination and intolerance deserve to be heard as they share the stories and truth about their experiences and feelings. And we must seek with great empathy to understand their challenges and their pain. Whereas we must learn, it is time to engage our community in meaningful and honest conversation about racial inequity, to build alliances with those committed to justice for all, and to work together to support our shared conviction that racism must end. Whereas we must lead, each of us, individually and collectively, is responsible for creating and nurturing an anti-racist learning environment where every child is respected and valued for who they are regardless of skin color. We must actively acknowledge, address, and prevent racial bias that occurs as a result of policies, practices, and actions. And whereas we must do better, our school division can be and will be a sanctuary of safety in our community and a beacon of light for the world as we build and strengthen trust with those we serve and model the acceptance of all people. Therefore, be it resolved that we, members of the New Kent School Board, stand steadfast in our commitment to foster an inclusive educational environment where every student, teacher, support professional, parent, and community member is treated with dignity and respect, as well as our commitment to continue fighting for racial justice and human and civil rights for all. That is the resolution. I believe it comes before you for action.
I think what we're going to do, just we're going to move it to do that right now.
Absolutely.
Well, you know what we did? We allowed questions during the Return to Learn. This is a formal board meeting, and so what we do is we do not entertain questions when we have the board process going on. We made an exception during the Return to Learn because we wanted to make sure, without exception, that everybody had an opportunity. So thank you. If you've got questions, please feel free to write us. You can either let Dr. Nichols know or one of us know, and we'll be glad to answer any questions that you have. Basically, this is an anti-racism resolution.
No, not everything goes in a work session. Return to Learn, because of that work, has occurred in multiple work sessions.
That's at the purview of the board. If they want to wait on voting, you can, but...
I'm not waiting on voting.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. I really think they want to move forward with the vote, but we do welcome your questions, okay? Excuse me? Not in an open board meeting. You are more than welcome to get in touch with Dr. Nichols, your board representative. Me, any one of us will be glad to answer your questions. But this is a resolution that has come before the board. The board is going to move forward on the vote for the resolution. It's a very respectful resolution, and we're going to move forward. Thank you. So board members, do I hear a motion to adopt the anti-racism resolution as presented?
I move that we adopt the anti-racism resolution as presented.
Do I hear a second?
I second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the new elementary school funding resolution.
Yes. Dr. Harding, I apologize. You have me one more time this evening. And that is for what has been talked about several times already. So what you have before you is New Kent County School Board Resolution. This is the same resolution that we passed in the spring. So we did not, the board supervisors did not move forward in the spring bond pool. This is for the fall bond pool, but the resolution is exactly the same. The way it has to work by code, and you can see Section 5.2, 2640 of the Code of Virginia, the school board must request that the board of supervisors issue the school bonds. We cannot obtain debt directly. We have to do it through the county. So what you have before you is the resolution that requests the board of supervisors issue general obligation school bonds for school purposes and consenting to the issuance thereof. This is for the new elementary school project. So very timely that was discussed tonight. The resolution is before you. I'd be happy to answer any questions. It is also an action item.
Board members, questions?
So this is a resolution, then, that must go before the board of supervisors for them to approve?
Correct. So for the, and for the board of supervisors to approve it, it must first come from you. So you must ask for that obligation for the board of supervisors to move forward.
Will we be notified when this resolution comes before the board of supervisors?
Yes.
When their agenda will know what meeting?
I know. I just think it's important that we have board representation.
Yes.
We're going to need clarification for why 1% money is not something that they want to do to fund the school.
If that's the way it goes.
I know there is a target date for when they're putting it before the board, but I will confirm that and make sure we discuss that also at the chair, vice chair meeting that's forthcoming. So, good question.
So board members, do I hear a motion to adopt the new elementary school funding resolution as presented?
I move that we adopt the school resolution as presented.
Do I hear a second?
I second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, no opposed. Motion carries. And then the next item on the agenda is the consider approval of Section 125 Premium Only Plan. You get to sit down. Good evening.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, I'm hoping this will be an easier decision than earlier this evening. Each year, I come to you about this time. Our plan year begins October 1 through September 30. And for your consideration this evening is I'm seeking approval for us to continue our Section 125 Premium Only Plan. This plan does meet our goal for offering and hiring and retaining for staff competitive compensation benefits. But this allows their deductions to be on a pre-tax basis. It does require that each year that you review the plan, we sign the agreement and the resolution, and that we do pass a non-discrimination test, and that we follow all the IRS rules. But this allows our employees to seek a pre-tax basis to reduce their income for their deductions for their health plans, vision, disability plans, HSA, flexible spending. We offer that as well. We also offer critical group accident insurance as well and critical care. And so I would like to seek your approval this evening to continue this. We have completed our plan designs, and then upon your approval, we could send our employees their plan summaries and their summary of benefits so that they could have those as well. Are there any questions regarding the 125 Premium Only Plan?
Board members, questions? No ma'am.
Okay. Thank you so much for your time.
Since there are no questions regarding the Section 125 Premium Only Plan, do I hear a motion to approve the plan as presented this evening?
I move we approve the Section 125 Premium Only Plan as presented.
I second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, no one's opposed. Motion carries. There's one more item, action item. Do I hear a motion to approve the nomination for the 2020 V S B A Media Honor Roll as presented?
I move that we approve the nomination of the 2020 V S B A Media Honor Roll as presented.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, no one's opposed. Motion carries. The last item on the agenda, I just want to remind everybody that that particular document requires all of us to sign. So before you leave, as you're walking out tonight, if you would stop by and sign that, that would be great. And anything else?
So our next work session, I believe, is August 17. And we'll continue to provide updates on Return to Learn and several other things at that time.
Do I hear a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Section 2.2-3711 and 2.2-3711A 2 of the Code of Virginia for discussion and consideration of personnel matters, including the superintendent's evaluation?
I have information for the press. Under the beauty of this, A, we are not allowed to ask questions. B, we were allowed to ask questions. And C, we were asked to think of any questions. Why is it different between the two?
I was asking board members if they had questions. Customarily, what we do before we vote is board members have an opportunity. In fact, if you notice, we also did that when it came to the Return to Learn. What we do is board members have an opportunity to ask final, any final questions they have before a motion is carried. That was not, that was not to the public. That was to the board.
Well, I'm confused then because on the Return to Learn portion, there were many questions that were asked and answered.
There was a citizen's sign-up sheet.
It's a citizen's sign-up sheet that's there.
For comments. It's part of the agenda that's posted online. So there's a section where you can sign up to speak if there's something you want to say. And then the board, you have three minutes is the formal procedure. And then you have three minutes to say whatever it is that you want to say. And then the board, most of the time, doesn't respond. And so that's, I mean, if it's a question, we would get back to you with an answer.
So I didn't sign up to speak, but I was able to ask and have questions answered.
You know, we did that, we did that to be polite. It was...
So can you be polite to me if I have a question about another?
Because you're pushing the limits right now, frankly. Sorry. Frankly, you had the opportunity to talk if you'd wanted to sign up. During Return to Learn, we have been extremely expansive, broadened every possible mode of communication that we could. And we're really glad that we were able to do that. But board meeting protocol is formal. It's a formal process. It's guarded by Robert's Rules. We followed them. We've done everything we needed to do tonight. And I'm trying to be as gracious as I can, but you're really, you're really pushing it. You're more than welcome to schedule an appointment with any one of us, a phone call. You can talk to the superintendent. It's a rural community. We're wide open. But we're not going to change board protocol in a meeting. We allowed it for the Return to Learn because it is a critical situation in our county right now. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
I am not against the anti-racism resolution. I'm against not having questions from citizens.
So moving forward, do I hear a motion to go into closed session?
I move we go into closed session.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. If anyone wants to wait?